It's a little after 6:30. Do we have everybody assembled that we need assembled? We've got all the councilors here. We've got Mr. Rogers here. Mr. Rogers, are you ready to go from your end?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right. So I hereby declare it to be 6:30. And we'll begin the 6:30 meeting. First of all, we have to officially come out of closed session. Do we have a closed-meeting certification motion?
Yes. I move that the city council members certify by a reported vote that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Ms. Thomas, do you take the vote?
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
The motion passes four nothing. And I will note for those who were not here earlier that Counselor McGill will not be with us for this evening's meeting. So we're back in session. We'll begin the 6:30 PM business meeting with a moment of silence, please. And I will note for the record that even the baby was silent during that 15 seconds or so. So announcements.
Yes, I have one. I would like to announce some about the Men's Day Health Event that's going to take place this Saturday at, from 9:00 to 2:00, at Mount Zion First African Baptist Church. It's on Langford Avenue. And it's an opportunity that they're going to have some games there for men to do, you know, haircuts. They're going to have transportation. And is this going to be an opportunity for men, all men, just to come out and get more information about health and healthy options? There's going to be transportation provided. I'm planning to go. I'm encouraging my fraternity brothers. There's going to be a fraternity challenge there as well with different fraternities to come out and do some fun events. But the main point is to get the information out about the health event and healthy choices and living. So I'm looking forward to this. Additional information, you can contact Jackie Martin. And she can be reached at (243) 8352. That's (243) 8352. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wade. Other announcements? Just a couple of announcements or comments or whatever. One, I had the pleasure this morning of joining Alex Zahn at a C Y M event. C Y M stands for Close Your Mouth. And it's an effort to get kids to close their mouth and open their ears instead. And he had us talking to about 15 four-year-olds from Barrett Daycare Center. And that was an interesting experience. Second, I know over the weekend, there was a very successful Pride event and also a very successful Sabroso Festival. And I'm sorry, I couldn't go to either one since I was in Michigan with our daughter and our brand-new granddaughter. So other things to be doing. But both of these events, I think, are examples of how Charlottesville, at its best, is open and welcoming to diverse populations and diverse groups. And both of these are good examples of that. I should also add that today I had the privilege of issuing a mayoral proclamation to W N R N Radio. So they're celebrating 25 years of nonprofit radio and very successful. And the one thing that I also noted that is in honor today, which I did not issue a proclamation about, is National Talk Like a Pirate Day.
Aye.
Boards and Commissions. Is there a motion regarding Board and Commission appointments? Who's got that?
I would move to appoint to the Board of Architectural Review Roger Burrell and Tyler Whitney, to the Historic Resources Commitment Committee, Didi Smith, to the Jont Board, Lucas Ames, Christine Appert, and Ray Heron, to the YMCA Board, Shanice Bradford, to the P V C C Board, Chinta Gaston, and to the Region 10 Board, Joe Sakos.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not? Just voice vote, I guess, would be fine for this? Or do we need a?
I think we need a roll call.
Roll call?
I don't know if the public can hear me at all.
Okay.
So I'll just.
Roll call vote, please, Ms. Thomas.
Yes. Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes four nothing. And we thank those folks for the expectation of their good service and also thank the applicants whom we did not appoint. It's always useful to see folks applying who we may want to put into service in some other way later on. Consent Agenda. Ms. Thomas, if you're not sure you can be heard reading the Consent Agenda, can you at least bring it up on camera?
I can hear her pretty fine. I don't know. We can hear her on the broadcast as well?
You can. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Consent Agenda. Number three, United Way Reimbursement of Community Resource Hotline Staff Costs, $26,333.76. Second reading. Four, Resolution, Virginia Department of Social Services Temporary Aid to Needy Families Grants, $100,000, first of two readings. Five, Resolution, Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS/HIV Grant Amendment, $3,981, one of two readings. Six, Resolution, Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless, BRAC, reimbursement of funds for staff costs to support the homeless information hotline or homeless information line, $15,381.60, one of two readings.
Thank you. So we will now take public comment regarding items on the Consent Agenda, those four items that were just read by the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. In the Zoom webinar, you may select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak on the Consent Agenda, you may press star nine. And I want to reemphasize, if you are one of those folks who signed up in advance, this is not your time. Your time will come in a few minutes. So just on those four items alone, is there anybody in council chambers who would like to speak on a Consent Agenda item?
I'm sorry, you're not talking about the action items now?
Correct. Just the four Consent Agenda items. Any virtual speakers who would like to speak on any of those four matters?
Josh Cron has his hand raised. Mr. Cron, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. And I wasn't clear, is this the time to speak on the JPA development?
No. It is only on the four items on the Consent Agenda. Okay. Is there anyone else? I guess there is nobody else wanting to speak on the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments from council? Ms. Thomas, you take the vote?
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four nothing to adopt the Consent Agenda. City Manager Report. Mr. Rogers, is there a report from the City Manager's Office?
Yes, sir. There are a couple of items. I wanted to note that tonight is the second council meeting for this month. We have been presenting quarterly financial reports to council at the end of each quarter. The last report we presented was for the third quarter of FY '22. And in keeping with the schedule, the fourth quarter report is now due. Note that we will not be presenting the fourth quarter report FY '22 tonight as it represents the financial results for all of last year. And those results will not be final until after the audit is completed. The city's auditors have begun their work. And Mr. Kullanane and the Finance Director is scheduled to present the audit and year-end financial results to council in early December. We are still anticipating a sizable surplus, as we previously discussed. And at this point, we do not anticipate any material differences in what was previously reported. For your reference, the quarterly reports can be found on the city's budget webpage and can be viewed interactively using the Budget Explorer tool. We will resume our established quarterly financial report presentation at the second meeting in October with the presentation of the results of the first quarter of the current year. So that's on the financial report. I have not provided a written report, City Manager's Report, tonight. We do that the first meeting of each month. I would like to note, though, for your information, we had promised last week that we would come back to you with a proposal for the transportation salary adjustment and pupil transportation salary adjustment this meeting. We're not quite ready. We have worked hard on it to get all of the issues resolved. We will be back to you for the October 3rd meeting with the proposal on pupil transportation. And that concludes the City Manager's Report for tonight.
Any questions of Mr. Rogers? Thank you, Mr. Rogers. So now we come to Community Matters. We have eight pre-registered speakers, leaving eight slots for additional speakers on Community Matters. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. Let's see, I'm told to ask no comments, please, on public hearing items coming up during action items. The only public hearing we've got deals with the C D B G and Home Investment Partnerships Funds for Program Year '23-'24. So if you were intending to speak on that, please hold until we get to that point. I don't see any indication that that was among the issues that the folks had indicated they wanted to talk about. But anyway, if you are not somebody who want to talk about that, we will now open the floor to pre-registered speakers. And our first speaker available, is that Quinn Glover?
I do not see him in our Zoom audience.
Is Quinn Glover here? Okay. So the second person on the list is Jack Morava, who is here in person, says?
I'm Jack Morava of Montevideo Circle. And I want to say my time to my wife. Ellen Cantini.
I'm Ellen Cantini Morava. My own request to speak mysteriously disappeared. After the S U P application for the 2005 JPA was submitted last winter, residents of the JPA neighborhood wrote to city staff, the Planning Commission, and city council, pointing out how the mass and scale conflicts with comprehensive plan guidelines, stating that new development should have forms and scales that are respectful of the surrounding neighborhood. We also pointed out the conflicts in height with the entrance corridor guidelines, recommending reduced height near low-density uses. We brought up the negative impacts this development would have on traffic, parking, the environment, and the quality of life of nearby homeowners, and noted that it includes no affordable housing. The city staff report of March 30th acknowledged that, quote, "The unbroken east and west elevations exceed what is typical within this corridor." In fact, exceed what is typical in Charlottesville. And further, quote, "That a height of 75 feet exceeds the recommendation for this location and therefore results in adverse impact." The developer asked for a postponement of the S U P review, but made no changes to their proposal. Instead, city staff changed their report, replacing adverse impact with no adverse impact. What happened? Last May, this S U P was narrowly approved by the Planning Commission in a four-to-three vote. Members of both the Planning Commission and city council expressed concern about the project's massing and scale and its negative impacts on the neighborhood. The application was put on city council's June 6 agenda, then got suddenly removed. Mayor Snook explained in an email that Mr. Freese had concerns about the massing and scale and wanted city staff to work with the developer to make the massing, quote, "less obnoxious." Three months passed, and now the application is back on your agenda, completely unchanged. What happened? The staff memo on today's agenda acknowledges the concerns voiced by members of the Planning Commission and city council last May, but it concludes that, quote, "Most of the massing and scale issues could be addressed and mitigated when the project comes back to E R B for design review and a certificate of appropriateness." But in fact, there is no such thing as mitigating massing and scale, besides reducing them. If you approve the requested height and density, mitigation would just be lipstick on a pig. This project would not only harm the neighborhood, it would effectively rezone it before rezoning has taken place. This undermines the community collaborative rezoning process that the city is committed to. You, our elected representatives, have the power to reject it, or at least to insist on major modifications before approving it. Please use that power and don't sell out our neighborhood to the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cantini Morava. The next person on my list is Martha Smythe, who I believe would be online. Is that correct?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Get rid of that. Good evening. Let's get it right this time. Dedicating 10% of the units in all construction projects larger than 10 units will barely put a dent in the need for affordable housing in Charlottesville. The city must take a direct approach to the problem rather than the broad-brush programs outlined in the Comp Plan, SLUM, Inclusionary Zoning documents, referred to next time as I Z. I'm speaking on behalf of concerned city residents. We support the goals of increased affordable housing, but need to call out the significant shortcomings that we see in these plans. We are convinced the zoning derived from the public documents thus far will not produce what's required. Charlottesville has grown around 5% over the past decade. If that rate continues, we should expect to need some 2,300 new residents. We will have some 2,300 new residents by 2030. That would call for 975 new housing units. If all of these residences were in buildings of 10 or more units, and they will not be, we would gain a maximum of 97 affordable units. That is less than 4% of the 2,700 to 3,000 affordable units the city has indicated are needed. Charlottesville must demand a more focused, straightforward path to produce affordable housing and make a stronger and deeper commitment to it. Some of these ideas that are following would directly produce more affordable housing. Incentivize infill with smaller homes on lots with traditional, single-family neighborhoods. Adapt underused office and commercial space to residential units through cooperative relationships between the city and the owners. Negotiate with owners of malls and sizable commercial parcels to build large affordable housing complexes that offer easy access to shopping, services, parking, and public transportation. Such properties do exist. Commit buildable city-owned land for dedicated affordable housing by establishing land trusts. Again, such properties do exist. Offer subsidies to local developers to build affordable housing instead of market-rate units. Sell city-owned land in Alamo County to raise money to underwrite some of the construction costs and help finance the promised $10 million annual fund, which has not yet been funded. Require during the first few years of new zoning compatibility, quote-unquote, with adjacent residences in G R and M I R areas, as mentioned in the I Z document. Then gradually permit the substantial changes in form and height as outlined. We have heard that it won't all happen at once, so let's ensure that by phasing it in. Retain city reviews and opportunities for residents to comment about future development. Expanding unfettered by right features in the new zoning would close the doors on public input. The city must maintain fairness and be responsible and accountable for the outcomes of significant projects. I don't know what my time is.
You're up.
Okay. Phil Harway will continue these comments when he speaks shortly. Thank you.
And of course, we got the written submission that you sent to us earlier today. Mr. Trail, do we have Mr. Gilliken online? Can you hear me? So the next person after Matthew Gilliken is supposed to be Ann Benham, and it says in person. I don't see Ann here. Is she online? I'm not sure we're getting anywhere with our online contacts here.
I don't see that name.
Okay. The next person up would be Marilyn Poling, who said she was going to be online. Is she online? I don't have that list in front of me. Can we get her up? Mr. Trail, are we able to make this happen?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
This is Marilyn. Hello?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Marilyn Poling. I live at 123 Observatory Avenue, and I'm speaking about the 2005 JPA project. Yesterday, I reviewed the comments by the public from the May 10 Planning Commission meeting. The majority of comments from those is in favor of the, from those in favor of the project cited the need for affordable student housing. The 2005 JPA project will have market-rate luxury units, not affordable. If current more affordable housing in the JPA neighborhood is replaced by such projects, affordable student housing in the neighborhood would decrease, and students needing affordable housing would need to move to other neighborhoods. A major concern of mine is traffic and parking. When university classes are in session, JPA is lined with cars. When trying to exit Observatory onto JPA, there is no visibility of traffic to the left, and exiting onto JPA is frightening. Adding even the cars from the 125 parking spaces planned for the project would increase the danger. It is debatable whether 265 of the expected 390 tenants of the project will decide against cars. Whether or not tenants park legally or illegally on Washington and Observatory, their visitors will. Earlier this year, one of my neighbors tried to turn from JPA onto Observatory while a fire truck was parked on Observatory at the corner of JPA. She was unable to pass the fire truck to get home. If her car, a Honda Civic, was unable to pass a fire truck, a fire truck would be unable to pass a small car to get to a fire further along Observatory. Any extra parking, legal or illegal, on Observatory would be dangerous. The city claims interest in aging in place as well as affordable housing. My home on Observatory Avenue, bought in 1987 when all housing was more affordable, is my affordable housing. I couldn't afford to buy a house elsewhere in Charlottesville. It is where I plan to age in place.
Ms. Poling, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to be clear. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, the next person on our list is Luisa Candelario. Is Ms. Candelario online? Okay. Then the next person up would be Philip Harway. Mr. Harway, are you there? Let's go back to.
I think they're trying to turn it on.
I apologize in advance, we're having some technical difficulties we don't usually have at these meetings, but something appears to be a little bit squirrely today, so we're doing our best.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. My name is Philip Harway. I live on Alta Vista Avenue. Martha Smythe read the first part of our comments, and she addressed a few things that we think the city should do to achieve its affordable housing goals. And there were one or two more I want to mention because she ran out of time. Do budget for affordability. Do budget in advance of projects to expand. Do budget in advance of projects to expand and improve the city's infrastructure, including the streets, the water, sewer, sidewalks, bikeways. Previous speaker mentioned problems there. Do involve UVA more actively in housing. UVA students create a burden on Charlottesville affordable housing, and the university pays very little in taxes in exchange for city facilities and services. If it provided more housing on grounds, that would alleviate the shortage in housing and the pressure on the city to upzone everywhere all at once. Many in our city believe this is the key for the city to make meaningful progress on the issues. Now, I want to address some of the things that are potential pitfalls or seem to have been skimmed over in the plan, given what's been revealed so far. What to avoid? Avoid abandoning strategy and proven, clear approaches in favor of an unproven theory called upzone. Good planning and management are essential to a well-run city. Avoid attempting to impose changes in any and every part of the city at the same time. This would increase costs for infrastructure, spread the city's personnel thinner than it already is, and weaken its control. Avoid throwing neighborhoods open to the desires of development in any old random neighborhood. We don't oppose free enterprise, but this one is a case where having a few guardrails would be very wise. It would also minimize chaos throughout the city. Avoid minimizing protections for our environment so the city remains livable and healthy and the region remains capable of sustaining agriculture. Avoid allowing developers to call all the shots. Failing to negotiate enforceable contracts and not procuring contributions for the profit funds from developers who refuse to build affordable units. We commend the city's efforts to right the wrongs of the past and the present. We hope our city will succeed in that intention, but we sincerely believe this plan and substantive zoning will not achieve that goal of affordable housing. Moreover, we see many risks and possible unintended, undesirable consequences from this plan. We ask -- excuse me. We ask that the city take these concerns into consideration before rushing headlong into citywide upzoning with objectionable and destructive features of the plan. And I'm not sure whether we mentioned in here getting rid of the special use permits. I think personally is a very big mistake. You give up all rights to control projects. Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Harway. Okay. So a couple people we skipped over because maybe they weren't on, or maybe we couldn't get hold of them. Let's go back to the beginning of the list. Quinn Glovier, is that person on?
I'm looking at the list. I don't -- I don't see that person.
Okay. How about Matthew Gilliken?
Matthew's there with his hand raised.
Okay. Matthew, can we get you on?
Thank you, Councilor. Sorry, I was a little late to show up. You're running ahead of schedule.
Sorry.
I'm speaking tonight -- let's keep that up. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Livable Seaville. First of all, I want to offer support for the comprehensive plan and the work that's being done to help make our city more affordable and livable as we address our affordable housing crisis. Second, I am very excited that, and we're very excited, that the city is considering dropping the speed limits on Cherry Avenue. We think this is a long overdue step, but I also want to lift up what the Fifeville Neighborhood Association is saying, which is to make that stretch 25 miles an hour for the entirety of Cherry Avenue, and they've highlighted their reasons for that, which are very good reasons. And then finally, we're speaking -- I want to speak on behalf of Livable Seaville in support of the 2005-2007 Jefferson Park Avenue Special Use Permit. We think this is an important project that should be approved. A key to fixing Charlottesville affordability crisis is building more housing. The rental vacancy rate in Charlottesville is very low, possibly below 2%. There simply aren't enough homes to meet our needs, and rents continue to rise as a result. Increasing the supply of rental homes will help shift power to the nearly 60% of city residents who are renters and shift that power away from landlords. Every part of our city needs more places for people to live, but the JPA corridor is a perfect spot to add capacity. The future land use map and comprehensive plan call for this type of density along JPA and for housing with good transit, bike and pedestrian access to key locations like UVA. Best of all, by meeting student demand there, we can prevent students from sprawling into nearby neighborhoods like Tenton Page and Fifeville and worsening displacement of longtime residents. This is a location where students, who are nearly all renters, have said they want to live. UVA Student Council said last fall in an excellent letter about the comprehensive plan that more student housing should go on the JPA corridor. Allowing more housing where students want to be is consistent with the city's affordable housing plan, which expresses a need to, quote, "increase the supply of housing, slow the increase in housing costs, while protecting lower-income and other marginalized communities." Another key to addressing our housing crisis is subsidizing affordable housing. The developer is planning to contribute $1.05 million to the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. This will help groups like CRHA, LEAP, AHIP, PHA, and Habitat in their work to address local housing issues. While the increased real estate tax revenue from the property will help fund other city services, including schools. Approving this development will signal that the city wants more housing built along the JPA Fontaine Corridor and will invite further development there. We call on city council to follow through on the commitments made in the comprehensive plan and vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilliken. So the next person on our list, Ann Benham, is she on at this point?
Benham.
Benham, B-E-N-H-A-M.
No.
Okay. How about Luisa Candelario? Okay. So that gets us through the pre-registered speakers. Next person we've got on our waiting list is Nina Barnes. Is Nina Barnes online? Is there anybody else here who would like to speak on any matter, community matters? Yes, sir.
I'd like to --
Come to a microphone, please.
I'm Jack Marala from Montebello Circle. I'd like to speak on behalf of Lorna Martins, who is unable to be here.
Okay.
All right. The City Code standard for special use permits states, "In considering an application for a special use permit, the city council shall consider the following factors. Number one, whether the proposed use of development will be harmonious with existing patterns of use and development within the neighborhood. 2005 JPA is as harmonious with the existing neighborhood as a whale in a goldfish bowl. The Entrance Corridor Design Guidelines suggest techniques for reducing the perceived massiveness and apparent height of large buildings. But there is such a thing as mass, not just the perception of mass, and such a thing as height, not just the appearance of height. You can Photoshop the whale to make it look smaller. Nevertheless, it's still a whale. It doesn't belong in contexts that were designed -- contexts that were designed for goldfish, period. The side streets, Observatory, and Washington were built in the 1920s. The homeowners lived in one- and two-story houses from that era. It's not just the proposed -- that the proposed building appears too tall and too massive. It is too tall and too massive. It would tower over adjacent homes, not just the ones behind it, but also the ones across the street from it on Observatory and Washington. It would cut their light in view. I speak from experience. I've lived in a ground-floor apartment next to a five-story apartment building. That apartment was dark all day. You couldn't see the sky. The City Code General Standards for Issuance of Special Use Permits continues, Point 4, that the city council shall consider whether the proposed use or developments will have any potentially adverse effects on the surrounding neighborhood or the community in general, and if so, whether there are any reasonable conditions of approval that would satisfactorily mitigate such contexts. Potential adverse impacts to be considered include the following: massing and scale of project. The 2021 Draft Comprehensive Plan likewise emphasizes context sensitivity in new developments. Strategy 3.1 specifies utilize context-sensitive planning tools to maintain and embrace, enhance the distinct identities of Charlottesville's neighborhood and corridors. Sub-strategies include encourage development that responds to the character of contiguous historic buildings and neighborhoods while allowing intense -- enhanced intensity of uses, including multifamily units, in forms and scales that are respectful in the surrounding neighborhoods. The Entrance Corridor Guidelines similarly state, "When making transitions to lower-density areas, modulate the mass of the building to relate to smaller buildings. Reduce high, near-to-low-density uses," Page 52. The proposed building would dominate and overwhelm the entire neighborhood. Please deny the application for special use permits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak to us?
There are a number of hands raised.
What's the first one?
Katrina Turner.
Ms. Turner?
Yeah.
You have three minutes.
Good evening. Calling tonight about the tax that was spoke about the last council meeting, on the car tax for the sticker, for the city sticker. So for 14 years, we have been paying for a sticker that we haven't had on our car. And instead of wanting to give the taxpayers back some of the money that really wasn't supposed to have been taken from us evidently from what the gentleman was saying, because the purpose of that tax was to display this sticker. And for 14 years, we have been paying for an invisible sticker. And instead of quickly saying yes, I know some of you all did say, yes, we need to stop this, but a few of you council members wanted to divert that money somewhere else to continue taking from us when it shouldn't have been taken from us for 14 whole years. So instead of worrying about what the city is gonna lose for taking this tax away, please worry about what the taxpayers have lost over these 14 years, paying for something that we evidently were not supposed to be paying for. I really think you should take something into consideration now knowing the purpose of that tax, the purpose of why you all took that money from us. And I think you all should at least try to give us some kind of rebate instead of thinking about how to continue putting it in the city fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there anyone else in person who would like to speak? Okay. Anybody else online?
Peter Krebs is next.
All right. Peter Krebs?
Hello. I'm Peter Krebs. I live at 1022 Tufton Avenue. I work for the Piedmont Environmental Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'd like to express support for the idea of reducing the speed limit on Cherry Avenue, really for the whole length of Cherry Avenue. 25 miles an hour is appropriate for a neighborhood street, which is what Cherry Avenue is, full of businesses, residences, parks, and schools. I think this is something that residents have been asking for for a really long time, and I am happy to hear that it looks like it could happen. Please, let's get it done. Speaking of Cherry Avenue and Fifeville, I also wanted to let everybody know that the Fifeville Trail is going to have its official opening on October 1st. That's 1115 at Cherry Avenue. We're going to open the trail, which already exists. People can walk there, but a ribbon cutting is always a nice thing. We're gonna cut the ribbon, and then we're gonna walk over to Greenstone on Fifth via the trail, and then we're gonna also walk along the trail up to the shops on Cherry Avenue, which are those shops that are right at the corner of Ninth Street that have the barber shop and the paint truck tashing and those places. That community block party is going to benefit the Music Resources Center. So that's really all afternoon from 12 to 5 at the shops at Cherry Avenue. So reduce the speed limit, please, to 25. Join us for celebrating the Fifeville Trail at 1115 on October 1st, and then a community block party, which is a great neighborhood event, all afternoon on October 1st. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Krebs. Who's next online?
According to this, Jennifer King.
Jennifer King?
Jennifer King.
Ms. King, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Fire away.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilors. My name is Jennifer King, and I reside at 221 Montebello Circle in the Jefferson Park Avenue neighborhood. First, I want to thank you all for your ser --
You just dropped away.
All right. You've undertaken a significant responsibility and time commitment to serve as Councilors, and I appreciate that you take the time to consider issues before you from all sides in the community. I'm sure it's extremely challenging to balance the needs of the city with the needs of its various residents, and I'm here to ask you to do just that this evening with my request that you deny the SUP request for 2005 Jefferson Park Avenue. I've been a homeowner in the JPA neighborhood for well over two decades, and while our Neighborhood Association may often have questions or request changes to proposed developments, at least in recent history, we have been fairly supportive of appropriately-sized and scaled developments in the neighborhood to help meet the needs of the city and the community. For example, the most recent development in the neighborhood on the corner of JPA and Montebello Circle was generally supported by me as well as many of our neighborhood residents. The reason for my support was that it was an appropriate size and scale for the neighborhood and was generally within the parameters of current zoning. The proposed development at 2005 JPA is substantially out of scale with the existing neighborhood, specifically the residential properties on Observatory, which would essentially be relegated to the shade of this enormous development. To be clear, I wouldn't be here tonight if what was being proposed was a buy-right development under current zoning. Even a buy-right development would be larger than the current neighborhood properties, but there is a substantial difference between a three-story building and a five-to-seven-story building budding up to a single-family home. It is my belief that the surrounding residential properties will be severely negatively impacted by a development of this size. While I understand that the developers are permitted to ask for what they want to make a development profitable, I also understand the city council may deny the SUP requests. I believe there can be a healthy balance between what may be a benefit to the city, the developers, and the current residents and property owners. My neighbors in the JPA Neighborhood Association, like me, appreciate the environment of the JPA neighborhood and the benefits it offers for aging in place, raising a family, or starting out as a young professional in Charlottesville. This neighborhood offers so much more than a student neighborhood, and focusing so specifically on housing more students in luxury accommodations is a missed opportunity for the city with respect to affordable housing in a neighborhood which offers the benefit of access to public transportation, excellent schools, and health and community services within walking distance. I urge you to deny the SUP requests and encourage development which would better support the identified priorities of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Who's next online?
Josh Kron.
Josh, you there?
Hi.
Now's the time.
How you doing? Apologies for jumping the gun earlier, but I just want to call in to say I want to support the plan to build more housing on JPA. Our city desperately needs more housing inventory in order to slow down the rapidly increasing housing costs due to scarcity and high demand. We also desperately need to increase density to create a more sustainable, less car-dependent community that meets our climate and public health goals. I think we're decades behind on building the inventory and density that cities like Charlottesville need to be strong and healthy places to live for everyone, not just the rich and or lucky. And every time we delay new housing projects, we get further from meeting -- we get further from meeting the goals outlined in the comprehensive plan. I think the apartments planned for JPA will provide both inventory and density in a place that already has relatively good access to transit and high walkability. It will also help reduce cost pressures on the nearby neighborhoods like Fayetteville and Tenth and Page, which are seeing high cost increases due to their proximity to UVA and downtown. So I'm urging council to approve this development on JPA and also to fast-track other housing approvals that come before you. And if I have any time left, also just to ditto the other callers who are advocating for 25 miles per hour all along Cherry Avenue. I think it is a no-brainer. That's a residential area, lots of businesses, and lots of pedestrians and cyclists, and it shouldn't be more than 25 along the entire stretch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who do we have next online?
I see Greg Weaver.
Mr. Weaver?
Hi, City Council. This is Greg Weaver, Fry Spring. First, I just want to voice disappointment that the line item about the budget amendments to address cat driver, the cat driver shortage should move from the agenda tonight after it was teased last meeting. I do understand that it's important to get this right. But also, the bus driver shortage is more than two weeks old. And now we, and more importantly, the affected drivers who are pulling 60-plus hour work weeks, will have to wait another two weeks to see what y'all are thinking. To me, it feels like a bit like a dangerous game of chicken. And like the sacrifices that the drivers are making for the community are being taken for granted, even if that's not really the intent. Similarly, allocating some care money to conduct an internal payroll audit for CAT is good because pay band adjustment is critical to solving the issues at hand. But napkin math doesn't present a favorable timeline for that. Tonight's the first reading, next reading's in two weeks. After that passes, you'll have to pay the firm that will have to play in and then allocate time to conduct the audit and generate a report. You gotta digest the report, decide what to do, and that will take more votes and readings. And the same goes for the CBO. You've heard from drivers in the community alike that you have to pass a strong CBO, but implementation of that will take a lot of time. My point is, you have all these like mid- and long-term initiatives, and they really need to be paired with immediate ones because this is such an urgent issue. If you don't take urgent action when you can, you're not only risking the system collapsing in the near term, you're risking the health and well-being of your most vulnerable communities. Last meeting, I mentioned that over the past couple of months, the CBO DSA Eco-Socialist Committee and I have been speaking with dozens of riders. Many of them rely on the bus as their main transportation to their job, to necessities, to recreation. And I'm sure you're all aware of that, but there are a lot of them. And I just think about them, and we have to imagine how are the current issues affecting them every single day? It's harder for them to face these than it is for us who don't rely on the system, right? So please make these strong mid- and long-term actions, conducting the payroll study, allocating money towards a regional transit authority, and passing a strong CBO, but also pay drivers now. They deserve it, they need it, our community deserves it, our community needs it. I also support Mr. Gillikin and Mr. Kron's comments. Also, someone who lives just a street over from Cherry, definitely support a lowered speed limit its entire length. Thanks so much for the time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Is there somebody else online?
John Hasek.
Mr. Hasek? Mr. Hasek, are you there?
Good evening. I would like to talk about medium-intensity residential upzoning. I live this nightmare today. Some people are already getting offers to buy their home unwanted many times a week by the people who are unclear about who they are and who they represent. There are instances of anonymous LLCs being used to buy adjacent properties and then consolidating them. This is evident in the case of the Mountain View Baptist Church PUD rezoning. And this anonymous buying up and then consolidation is a primary fear amongst MIR-impacted residents. In the case of the Mountain View Baptist Church PUD rezon, no matter what, tear downs didn't even come up once, despite the assurance that tear downs are actively discouraged as part of the new upzoning plan. Why should we now trust the Planning Commission of the County Council when it comes to tear downs as part of the future impact of upzoning? As had been clear by previous speakers in the context of 2005 JPA, why would we want new development of three-to-four-story up to 12-unit apartments to be buy right? It's simply a developer giveaway. There's no city-county coordination. Why are we animated about high-density development in the city while the county continues to promote sprawl, especially North Point, that is entirely car-dependent and which, being on the northern edge of the county, is likely to impact the northeast quadrant of the city, that being the portion along the axis linking US 29 North to and from I-64 and Pantops? I request that you reconsider medium-intensity residential. I'm unaware of such a radical upzone based on so limited evidence in any town of our size. I'd also recommend that you be wary of the rezoning ordinance process once a giveaway is made, e.g., to eliminate some level of review, e.g., buy right. Our higher density will become near impossible to reverse. While one councilor lives in an MIR street, the public record shows that three current councilors and one former councillor lived with a happy coincidence of being amongst the one-quarter of initially mapped MIR owners remapped to general residential during the evolution of the final version of the flum. I accept that this is a happy coincidence, but it really looks bad, imposing pain on others. Also statistically unlikely, like around a 1.3% probability of this happening. I would also like you to walk a street such as my own, Davis Avenue, and see if you can find the overprivileged people that are supposedly living in these streets. They simply don't exist, at least not in mine. Thank you very much for your attention and time sacrifice.
Thank you, Mr. Hasek. Anybody else?
Gene Gratz.
Gene?
Gene Gratz.
Gene Gratz? Are you there?
They're muted.
Can you unmute yourself, please?
Want to go to the next one?
Sure, we can come back.
Anthony Harrow.
Anthony Harrow, Mr. Harrow?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Anthony Harrow. I'm executive director for the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless, formerly known as TJAC. And I simply wanted to follow up on the letter that I sent to you all last week detailing a need for funding for operations at Premier Circle, our community's non-congregate COVID relief shelter being operated by Pachan. Usually, we use the city's grant opportunities for requests like this, but because of the immediacy of the need, I submitted this unique request. And it's gap funding, essentially. And primarily, I just wanted to clarify that the need for this gap funding is resulting from a grant source called Home ARP. We expected it originally to be available around October of this year. It is intended to be dedicated to homelessness. However, recently, we learned that it's likely not going to be available until mid-next year. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation for you all considering this request. Appreciate the opportunity to speak and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have over phone or email, anything that might be convenient for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Let me go back and see if we have some of the other folks who had indicated they wanted to speak. Ann Benham, is she still?
She's there, she has not raised her hand.
Okay.
There she goes.
Ms. Benham?
You need to unmute, Ms. Benham.
Okay, hello. City Council, Mr. Snook, Mr. Wade, Mr. Payne, and Mr. Pinkston. I assume Ms. McGill is absent, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'd like to speak about the 2000 JPA SUP. As a resident homeowner on Observatory Avenue, I request that you reject this application to build a student high-rise complex for reasons of very disproportionate building scale, excessive density, as well as safety, parking, environmental and quality of life issues. The proposed building will also provide no affordable housing units for the city-only luxury student housing. Observatory Avenue is a narrow dead-end street with only one lane of traffic available when there are other vehicles parked on the street, which is most of the year when the UVA fall and spring classes are in session. When large vehicles, such as garage trucks or UPS trucks, are on the road, they block traffic. A fire truck or ambulance would be unable to drive down Observatory if there were other large vehicles on the street or other parked cars. Earlier this year, I was prevented from returning to my house by car for over an hour because a fire truck was blocking the street entrance at the corner of Observatory and JPA. The proposed new complex calls for almost 400 students with underground parking provided for only 125. This leaves scores of students without spaces, many of whom will want to park on our street. The man who owns the three-story student complex next door to me told me only a few months ago that in over 10 years of his renting to students, not one student has ever not had a car. The five-to-seven-story proposed building is way out of proportion with the existing structures on Observatory, none of which is currently higher than three stories, with setbacks that have allowed for growth of the existing mature shade trees. The proposed density of 390 occupants will bring more artificial light at night, more noise, and definitely more parking and traffic. The construction is estimated to take two years. This is a very long time for Observatory residents, especially, I have to say, myself, who live right across the street from the proposed construction, to have to bear the noise six days a week, as well as the unsightly views of the construction process. As proposed, this project will dramatically alter the character of Observatory and reduce the quality of life for residents in terms of traffic, safety, the environment, and aesthetics.
Thank you, Ms. Benham, your time is up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the other, the last person I had preregistered we didn't find before is Louisa Candelario, is she on? Okay, so that means we have room for, how about Nina Barnes? Okay, so we have room for one more person?
Okay, the next person up is Gene Gratz.
Okay. Ms. Gratz? We're getting you only very vaguely, very dimly, very poor connection.
Okay, let me go again.
That's better, that's better.
I'll go, I'll be short. I live on Cherry Avenue, and I am so happy to see finally the proposal to decrease the speed limit to 25. This has been a request forever and was included in the small-area plan of Cherry Avenue that was approved by the Planning Commission and the City Council. So I'm so happy about that. But I would like to see the entirety of Cherry Avenue, I'll be 25. As cars come down the hill on Ridge Street onto Cherry, I can tell you, as a pedestrian, they're not very good at stopping at Thompson Park crosswalks at 35 or probably at 30 an hour. My heart was totaled while parked at Cherry Avenue House. I primarily became a pedestrian, a cyclist, and a cat user. So I think we need to work, continue, not just with the speed limit, but continue to work to engineer in safety for the pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers, and not just rely on humans to voluntarily comply. So I'm so happy about the proposed decrease in speed limit, but we do need to do more and to think more about perhaps 25 citywide, except on the bypass, getting rid of right turn on reds, which is chaos for pedestrians, and look at all the slip lanes in Charlottesville, which are extremely challenging. So happy to see this on the list and looking forward to more progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gratz. Do we have another person online?
Sarah Malpass.
Ms. Malpass?
Good evening. This is Sarah Malpass, 626 Bailey in Fayetteville. I'm also the vice president of the Fayetteville Neighborhood Association. And very much wanted to thank the city council for two things. First, your support of the Fayetteville Trail that we've been working on for the last several years. We're very excited to be hosting a ribbon cutting on October 1st at 1115 a.m., as Peter Krebs from the PEC mentioned. And just want to give a huge shout-out to him and to all the other partners who have worked with us to get that trail opened up. And certainly would love to see city council and others from the community come out for that ribbon cutting on the 1st. I also wanted to thank Livable Seville and PEC for their support of reducing the speed on portions of Cherry Avenue. We're, the neighborhood association is very much in support of changing the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. And as Ms. Gratz said, certainly excited to see the recommendations for any reduction, but very much hoping that you all will consider reducing the entire portion of the road that's under consideration for a new speed limit to 25 miles an hour. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Malpass. And I think we have room for one more, is there one? I've got, I've got 15. If you say 16, then we'll have to hold up and other people will have to, there will be another opportunity for a public comment at the end of the meeting. And we can now move on to the action items portion of the agenda. My apologies to those who are still waiting to speak. The first action item is a public hearing resolution, review of program performance and setting priorities for community development, block grant, and home investment partnerships funds. Erin Attackeck will present. Ms. Attackeck, are you with us?
I am. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As an entitlement community, the city receives grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development each year. The first is the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, and the second is the Home Investment Partnership Program, also known as HOME. At the end of each program year, a report called the CAPER, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, is submitted to HUD. That shows each locality's progress, goals, and objectives. Tonight's public hearing has two goals. First is to serve as a form of public comment for fiscal year 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. And this covers CDBG and HOME. The second is to discuss priorities for fiscal year 2023, CDBG and HOME. So first, we'll talk about the CAPER. For fiscal year 2021, the city of Charlottesville benefited approximately 4,485 people. About 63% of CDBG beneficiaries and 74% of home beneficiaries were minorities. The city was awarded a total of $433,471 in CDBG funds and $84,576.88 in HOME funds and met HUD's timeliness test on May 2nd, 2022. Under the HOME program, the region experienced COVID setbacks with the consortium locality partners. However, the city was still able to achieve its planned goals. The 2021 programs included the Community Investment Collaborative Entrepreneur and Financial Management Workshop, the Public Housing Association of Residents Resident-Involved Redevelopment Program, the Local Energy Alliance Program Workforce Development and Assisted Home Performance Program, Literacy Volunteers for Charlottesville and Admiral Beginning Level Workforce Level Tutoring, Admiral Housing Improvement Program Homeowner Rehabilitation, Habitat for Humanity Down payment assistance, Community Investment Collaborative COVID Micro Enterprise Financial Assistance Workshop, the Blue Ridge Health Department Community Health Worker Program, and Habitat for Humanities COVID-19 Financial Assistance Workshop. Now we'll look at setting priorities for fiscal year 2023, CDBG and HOME program. Before every CDBG and HOME- Last year, Council set priorities on September 20th, 2021, which included access to affordable housing, workforce development, micro enterprise assistance, access to quality childcare, homeowner rehabilitation, and down payment assistance. Council also set the admin and planning portion and the public services portion of the budget at the HUD-regulated maximum capacity amount of 20% and 15%, respectively. The remaining portion of those funds were set aside for economic development, public infrastructure, and housing projects within the Ridge Street priority neighborhood. The current fiscal year's adopted budget is attached to show how the funding has been allocated to different funding categories. Following today's public hearing, staff is asking for Council to provide guidance in CDBG and HOME priorities for fiscal year 2023, and any additional guidance on how you see CDBG and HOME funds you would like to see spent will take that into consideration. Myself and staff are here for any additional questions you may have.
Okay. Council, any clarifying questions before we open the public hearing?
No. Pretty straightforward for me.
Okay. So is there anyone wishing to comment on the CDBG and HOME funds for program year 2023, 2024? Anybody online wishing to comment? Anybody there? Apparently not. Okay. So we will close the public hearing. Matters now with Council. What's your pleasure?
This is just a process question, Ms. Attackeck, since I'm new to this. So the CAPR report is the first thing we're sort of approving, is that right?
Correct. And that looks at last year's programs. So we're closing out last year's report.
So I scanned through that list, which was quite extensive. I'm assuming that there's sort of standard rules that you all follow and best practice in terms of how that report is put together, and I'm relying on you all and your expertise to tell me that that report is accurate.
Yes. It gets put into HUD's computer system. It also gets, it was shared with regional partners for their public input, and it was put out for a public comment for a period of over 30 days for additional input as well.
And has HUD received it at this point, or will receive it after this meeting?
They will receive it at the end of the month, yeah. And they'll look at, look over it for a period of 15 to 45 days, send their comments back, and then we'll do a back-and-forth editing.
Okay. And your experience with them last year, I mean, do they typically take our reports on the first go, or is it some back-and-forth typically?
There's usually some back-and-forth, like one to two little edits here and there between us, TJPDC, and HUD, and then they accept it.
And what is, what's the involvement of TJPDC on this?
They're the regional administrator for the HOME program. So they handle the other locality partners in the region.
Okay. So I'm fine with the report, the priorities, I guess. Can we discuss that? Secondly?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. The, I was sort of expecting that there would be a point where we would say, all right, Council, what are our priorities for this coming year?
Right.
And it appears as though we're basically just re-adopting the priorities expressed last year. Is that, is that what's going on here, Ms. Attackeck?
That's normally been standard practice, is we bring forward the priorities from the same year to year.
Well, to be honest, I don't remember any significant discussion of priorities to say, you know, that caused us to add anything, add workforce development, for example, or to decrease emphasis on something else. I was trying to remember what our procedure has been the last few years, and I just don't remember very much discussion of that, that detail.
Yeah. Yeah, I think in the past, Council, usually they take a look at the priorities, you know, and they're usually comfortable with the priorities of the previous year. So basically, what they do is they reaffirm those priorities, and staff can move forward with that in terms of developing the action plan. However, if, after taking a look at the summary of the priorities and Council thinks that you want to scale it back or make any changes, you know, you can make the changes, and then staff will move forward with that in the action plan.
Yeah. In my previous life, I served on the CDBG Task Force, and of course, things change, but usually in one or two or three or four years, you never address all of the priorities that you had, and you just kind of keep plugging away until, you know, there's a kind of a big initiative or move to say, okay, you know, before it was neighborhoods, or, you know, you know. But I think that these priorities, I certainly think that we still can address them, you know, another year or two, but we certainly can have discussion to add. I don't think that that would, we're not necessarily going to have more money, so the pie is not going to get bigger, it's just the pieces may get smaller type of thing, or, but.
And Vice Mayor Wade, does, does that task force help develop the priorities and help assign the way the money is allocated? Is that the role of the task force?
In previous, yes and yes. You know, we would make recommendations, you know, to the City Council, and they would, you know, certainly have their input in and make the final say, and we will make, definitely make recommendations on what to do with the funding. But that was, you know, several cycles ago, and I don't think it's changed too much, but I don't want to say that that's the way they did it, you know, last time, so.
Yeah, I would appreciate a little more sort of process explanation, Mr. Kofune, in terms of how the CDGB Task Force works, or Ms. Attackeck. In terms of like allocating these funds as the, I'm sorry, I just am ignorant of the process. Could you, could you explain a little more about how that task force works?
The task force, the advisory, in nature, and once Council adopts the priority, staff will work with the task force in putting together the action plan. The action plan is essentially like budget, and that budget will mirror, mirror the priorities of the City Council in accordance with the consolidated plan, which will be coming to the City Council to provide some kind of educational process on how the consolidated plan works, the action plan, the CAPR, which we are considering right now. So the task force essentially is like advisory group of individuals that help the staff to formulate recommendations in accordance with City Council priorities back to the City Council for consideration.
So they've had a chance to look at these priorities and are, in the priorities that we've had before and that we're looking to?
Yeah.
This task force has looked at those priorities and said that these remain good ones?
Yeah, these are the priorities that were set in 2021. Yeah, they did. They did look at it as well.
Okay.
I had one question, just a picky question, on page 41 of the report, page 41 of the, of the packet, which would be the first page of your report. The second paragraph says, "Based on current projections, the city can expect CDBG funding amounts similar to funds received in FY 2022 are about $414,907. The city can expect HOME funding to be similar or less than that received in FY 2022, which is about $93,478.13 per locality, or $747,825 total for the HOME consortium." Is there a reason why you included the 747, 825? It would seem to me that the only numbers we need to know are the 414 plus the 93. Or am I missing something?
You're right. The city's awards are the 414 and the 93. Generally, we didn't, we usually include the 747 because the city is the lead entity for CDBG and HOME, so the HOME consortium award gets awarded to the city. So next May, you'll be getting the letter that's addressed to you saying, CDBG award is the 400 whatever thousand, and the HOME award is the 700 and whatever thousand, but it gets divided out by all six localities. So normally, we include the full amounts, just as a courtesy, but it does get divided out between everyone.
So 747, 825 is for all six localities, not just us?
Correct.
So when, next May, when we see a line item for that, we shouldn't be horrified and be wondering why the heck we're not getting $747,000 for us?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So the amount that we're actually talking about here today is roughly $508,000?
Totally. That's correct.
Okay.
So I'm just review, rereading the priorities that exist here that are laid out in this document, and they certainly seem noble and good ones and are in line with things we talk about all the time in terms of housing, micro enterprise assistance, workforce development, access to quality childcare, homeowner rehabilitation, and down payment assistance. Yeah, those seem like good priorities to me.
So the staff is asking us to do the following things. First is to set priorities for the CDBG and HOME programs. And I take it, Brian, then you're saying you're good with, with the suggestions they've made?
Yes.
One?
I am.
Michael, you fine?
Fine enough.
Okay. All right. So number one is good. Number two, the amount is capped by HUD at 20% of the total CDBG budget is $82,000 for admin and planning. When we accept the CDBG and HOME funding, the staffing, grant program reporting, and community engagement requirements are supported with admin and planning dollars as mandated by HUD. Do I gather, then, that we are supposed to be affirmatively saying, yes, we want to take that $82,981.40 for administrative and planning? Is that also something we're supposed to be affirmatively saying in this?
Well, it's, the regulation requires 20% for CDBG goes to admin, and, and also a smaller percentage, I believe 10%, erring correctly if I'm wrong, for HOME, HOME fund. So once you approve, when you approve the budget, everything you approve, yes, 20% goes to admin.
Okay.
I think 20% is within the overall amount, 20% of the total is going to admin.
Yes. Yes, no more than 20%. No more than 20%.
So I think if we just approve the resolution here, it takes care of that.
Right. And I'm, my only purpose in doing that is to make sure that we are acknowledging as we go and not just sort of rubber stamping without having read.
Yep. Yep. Absolutely.
And so, okay, so we've got a resolution that's been set out at page 47. The first issue is we have to approve, let's see, I guess the, the first item for us is to approve the CAPR report, and that is as set out on page 46 of our packet.
So I move the resolution approving the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote on this?
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snutt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to nothing. Then the second resolution appears on the following page of the packet. Actually, we're, I'm going the wrong way. Yeah. So page 47, establishing Council priorities for the CDBG and HOME funds. Is there a motion on this ordinance?
Yes. I move the resolution establishing Council's priorities for expenditure of CDBG and HOME funds during fiscal year 2023 to 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snutt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to nothing. All right. The next item up is ordinance air rights conveyance to University of Virginia for pedestrian bridge over Emmett Street. Mr. Freeze, are you presenting this to us?
Yes. Yes, sir. Hold on, give me one second to, there we are. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. So the item before you tonight is a request for air rights, granting of air rights for the University of Virginia for a new pedestrian bridge that would run from the Contemplative Commons Project, which is located, if folks don't know here, on Emmett Street at the Dell, just south of Thompson Road. It would run over Emmett Street and connect into the Newcombe Hall Plaza, which sits between the bookstore and parking garage building and Newcombe Hall. Effectively, this pedestrian bridge is intended to replace the existing pedestrian bridge that's just south of that location, which is not ADA accessible. So this new bridge is both in a better location for pedestrian circulation and would be ADA, fully ADA accessible. The bridge will sit 23 and 1/2 feet over the street, which exceeds our requirement of 16 feet substantially, and I think that's all I have to share. Now, unfortunately, there was, the required advertisement was not put in for the public hearing tonight, so we are, it appears that we are going to have to take up this item again at your next meeting and conduct a public hearing at that time. But I'm happy to answer any questions from the Council at this time, or, or take any comments.
So the bottom line is that one bridge is coming down and another bridge is going up?
That is my understanding. I know they don't currently have the schedule for the first bridge to come down, but that is the intention, is for that bridge to come down.
I wasn't thinking about order, but, yeah.
And that first bridge has no, the first, that first bridge has no ADA accessibility. This one will.
Right.
Correct.
So is the reason that it's, what, seven feet over the, the guidelines is because of the grade of the road, or to meet ADA guidelines, or both?
I'm sure it's a combination of all of those. The pedestrian bridge is beginning on the second floor of the structure on Emmett Street, and it's going to ramp down to ground level from there, and then goes across, so I'm sure it's, it's a combination of ADA accessibility and kind of it's starting an endpoint that puts it, puts it at that height.
Okay. So tonight is a first reading only. If there are any, if there are any other clarifying questions, we can get those out of the way now. If not, shall we agree that we'll pass it on to the next meeting where we'll have a public hearing that will be properly advertised?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is that what you're looking for, Mr. Freeze?
That will work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. The next item up is the ordinance that would reduce the speed limit on a portion of Cherry Avenue. Brennan Duncan will present. Mr. Duncan?
Good afternoon, Mayor Snutt and City Councilors. So what we have for you tonight is a proposal to change the ordinance to reduce the speed limit on Cherry Avenue. Going through a little bit of the history of this, especially with the renewed push for safer schools and the recent school bus shortage, you know, staff's attention has been redirected to some of our older efforts. I believe you've heard from several residents that, you know, this was started back with the Small Area Plan, and so we're really kind of picking up from where that had left The traffic counts were obtained, and I completed a traffic study to evaluate whether the speeds along Cherry Avenue were appropriate or should be changed. As a result of that study, I determined that the current speed limit along Cherry Avenue is not appropriate for the character of the corridor and should be amended. The traffic counts were obtained and I completed a traffic study to evaluate whether the speeds along Cherry Avenue were appropriate or should be changed. As a result of that study, I determined that the current speed limit along Cherry Avenue is not appropriate for the character of the corridor and should be amended to better reflect the current speeds along with the desired feel for the mostly residential corridor. As such, I'm recommending a change to the speed limit for the section of Cherry from Cleveland Avenue to Roosevelt Brown to be reduced from thirty-five miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. This section of roadway is entirely residential with two of the city schools located along it. The section of roadway between Roosevelt Brown and Ridge Street, I'm proposing that it would be changed from thirty-five miles an hour to thirty miles an hour. This is much more of a commercial nature, connects directly to Ridge Street with its speed limit of forty miles an hour, which was recently reduced, and is on the direct route to the UVA Hospital. We also did look at Elliott Avenue on the opposite side of Ridge, but the speeds along that corridor were significantly higher. And at this point in time, I cannot recommend reducing them based on the criteria for setting speed limits. There's really not much of a budgetary impact here. It's just using maintenance funds to put up some, some new signage. I'm here for any questions or comments that the council has.
Councilors, questions?
Yeah, could you say a little more about the, I guess, the theory or the practice of traffic engineering when it comes to determining? I guess VDOT sets a certain speed limit that is sort of the max. And then you have to prove, you know, establish a case, I suppose, to go lower than that? Is that the idea?
No, so we, we set the, the speed limit. We don't have to go through a VDOT to do that. As the city, we own and maintain our own streets.
Uh-huh.
But, but we do have to have an engineering study to justify those speed limits. Generally speaking, traffic engineering principles use the eighty-fifth percentile of, of the traveling public as kind of the threshold for which speeds should be set. So that's basically saying fifteen percent of the driver base is going above the speed limit and eighty-five percent are following the speed limit. That's, you know, trying to make it so that it's reasonable that, you know, most of the traveling public are not breaking the speed limit, just, you know, in their everyday travels.
So I guess the only sort of, or a counter to that, I suppose, is that if you have a street or just the sort of geography of a street and the way it's laid out and people are just, everyone is driving too fast on that road. I guess my question is if, if you're setting speed limits based on what people are actually driving as opposed to what sort of the physics of the situation would say is safe, how do those two, I'm sorry if this is like a unclear question, but I'm trying to get at, part of what, I think what you're saying is that, which makes sense, you'd set speed limits based off how people normally travel and they, obviously, most of the time don't have wrecks. But sometimes you might have, I guess, a cramped street or just the topography of the street is such that even if people, say like on Fifth Street, you know, even if people do drive excessively, it, the road just can't, they can't do so safely.
Right, and so in the instance of Fifth Street, since you brought that up, we reduced the speed limit mainly to try and mitigate the, the rear end and angle collisions that we had on that street. So the crash history is part of that analysis.
I see.
We don't have that necessarily on the Cherry Avenue corridor. More broadly, again, there is a design speed that, you know, roads, you know, as you are building or designing a street, you can design it for a certain speed limit. Usually that comes into play when you have curves and those types of, of things. You can design it in a way that, you know, a car can't physically travel, you know, at excessive speed around a curve. In this particular instance, there aren't a lot of curves on this, on the section of the roadway there. So if you were strictly talking about the design speed for that roadway, it would be much higher than, than what we're posting, even, even the thirty-five mile an hour.
In the Cherry piece, you're saying the design speed would be higher?
Correct.
Uh-huh. So on the Elliott side of Ridge, what is the speed limit now?
Thirty-five there as well.
And you're saying keep that the same?
For now. I do think that when, I mean, we do have a, I believe, an unfunded or partially funded project for Elliott Streetscape, you know, that will change the characteristics and possibly change some of the driver behavior in that area. I do think that, you know, once that is redesigned and rebuilt, that we should, you know, take another look at, at the speed limit in that section.
And so the section between Roosevelt Brown and Ridge, the neighbors are saying their strong preference is that it be twenty-five miles an hour, right?
Correct.
And your thinking was thirty?
Yeah, I mean, if we strictly went by the eighty-fifth percentile for the full corridor, all the way from Cleveland to Ridge, just using the eighty-fifth percentile, we would do thirty miles an hour for the full stretch.
Uh-huh.
But taking into account the fact that we have the schools there, the fact that we have on-street parking there, the fact that, you know, there's, it's all residential and there's driveways and that kind of thing. I, I felt it was appropriate for that residential portion of the street to reduce it, you know, additional five miles an hour to the twenty-five.
And is there any objection that you would have? I mean, what would be the objection to, to lowering the section from Ridge to Roosevelt Brown by another five miles an hour?
I, I mean, I believe the objection is, is that if you do so, you're just creating a, a situation in which police have to enforce a speed limit that probably will not be adhered to.
Got it.
Much, as, as much as I, I hate to admit it, I think that the city made an error when they put two fifty at thirty-five miles an hour, you know, back in the day. You know, if, if we take the actual average speed on, on two fifty, it's probably forty-five miles an hour with an eighty-fifth percentile closer to fifty.
Yeah.
So you just, you're creating a situation where you're, you know, you're making it so the majority of the people driving on that road are essentially creating a crime.
Got it.
No, I, I concur with staff. I literally did hundreds of these when I did planning for the county for a lot of neighborhood streets in the county. So Brennan and I concur with everything you said. Brought back old memories, so thank you. So I, I agree with staff's recommendation for twenty-five and then thirty.
Michael?
Likewise.
You know, I'm, I'm torn because on the one hand, I don't really want to have the city council be in the business of second guessing the traffic engineers.
Right.
On the other hand, I also acknowledge that the, the crosswalks at the bottom of the hill by Tonsler Park are some of the most dangerous crosswalks we've got in the city right now.
Right.
And that's because admittedly, I don't know that it's going to be affected much by, you could put a speed limit sign saying, oh, by the way, you can only go twenty-five, but as you're going down the hill, you're going to accelerate beyond that in any event. And I also wonder whether it would make more sense to say, okay, we're going from twenty-five to thirty-five on the other side. And maybe it'd be easier on the driver to say, we're going to be twenty-five all the way until it gets to the break point of the
Ridge.
Of Ridge Street and the traffic light and you've crested a hill and it's clearly a different situation all the way around.
Yeah, if it were up to me, I would have twenty-five miles an hour the entire length of Cherry up to Ridge. You know, I can appreciate, certainly respect and appreciate the traffic engineer's position. And maybe that's just emotion on my part, thinking that five miles an hour less would be better. But the people in the neighborhood have asked for that. It seems like a small thing to do. Perhaps it sets up a situation where it can't be enforced, but I know that there's going to be more good things happening on Cherry in that area and the small area plan, I guess, called for that. So my own view would be make it twenty-five miles an hour the whole way. So I don't know how others feel, how strongly people feel about twenty-five, thirty, or thirty-five.
Well, my, my preference is also for twenty-five the whole way, but it's also a position that I hold lightly. I'm not going to fight anybody to the death over it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of twenty-five and thirty. I just, I, I've done too many of these studies to, you know. Now, I guess I'm in a position of, you know, decision-making. Before, I was making recommendations to the decision-makers. But I know that in these type of things that, you know, just like if we own sixty-four and we put the speed limit at fifty, the road is made to build a certain way, people are going to go what they, they feel. So I just, I'm like you, Lloyd, you know, I'm not going to, you know. My position is to go with staff's recommendation, but, you know, it's
Are there things that we could do, Mr. Duncan, for like generally slowing the traffic in that area? Like in, in front of Tonsler Park?
They already have some traffic calming.
They have traffic calming there?
A, a lot of those have already happened. I mean, even the, the bump out where, where you're talking about the crosswalks, you know, there's an island in the middle there, the lanes have been narrowed, we've installed rapid flashing beacons. You know, we're still seeing the same, same speeds or, you know, in that corridor with, with those traffic calming measures.
How upset does it make you, Mr. Duncan, if we, if we went twenty-five the whole way? Is it something that's like, ah, whatever, or man, these guys are really messing up?
I, I've done, I've done my analysis, I have my recommendation. I, I'm not sure, you know, council can, can adopt the ordinance. I'm not even sure, maybe Lisa Robinson can weigh in, whether or not council has the ability to override me when it comes to this.
I actually asked her, and yes, we do.
Okay.
And she also, to be fair, it's not something that we would freely do, but we do have the power.
Okay.
Yeah, for example, if you recommended thirty, I would never suggest thirty-five for what it's worth.
So.
At this point, I'm in a position where I'm going to change my recommendation, if that's, if that's what you're looking for.
Not looking for you to change your recommendation?
Not at all, no.
What do I think? I mean, I think I'm in a similar boat. I would say my instinct is that twenty-five the whole way is, would be the best. But because I'm not a traffic engineer and I have absolutely no knowledge of that world, I have a really hard time feeling in any way confident about that instinct because I have no idea what the implications or engineering reasons for the recommendation are. So I guess that's sort of where I'm at. I feel, I feel like if my instinct is there, but I feel like I'm basing that on no actual knowledge on my part, which makes me a little unsure about it.
Yeah, well, I, I think it would be silly for us to, to put this off on a two-two vote. I'm willing to go with a twenty-five and thirty.
Okay.
So, somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we accept staff's recommendations for speed limit on Cherry Avenue.
And there's a specific, let's see, specific resolution?
Change the ordinance?
Page fifty-seven. You're moving the resolution on page fifty-seven, is that correct?
Okay. I move that we adopt ordinance amending and reordaining section fifteen dash ninety-nine of chapter fifteen of the Code of the City of Charlotte to reduce the speed limit on a portion of Cherry Avenue and that we adopt the ordinance effective on this first reading, waiving the requirements for a second reading as allowed by City Code section two dash ninety-seven.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Ms. Thomas, do you want to call the vote?
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snutt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you.
Next is the resolution on the special use permit request at two thousand five, two thousand seven JPA and one oh four Observatory Avenue. Matt, are you here to present things?
I'll be presenting, Mayor. Matt Alpley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. Mayor, City Council, tonight you will be reviewing a request for a special use permit at two thousand five, two thousand seven, Johnson Park Avenue and one oh four Observatory Avenue. This request is a resolution that only requires one reading from council. Aspen Topco Two Acquisitions LLC is the contract purchaser of the subject property and is represented by Mitchell Matthews Architects and Planners. They have submitted a special use application requesting an increase from the buyright density on the site from twenty-one dwelling units per acre to seventy dwelling units per acre. Increase the buyright height from forty-five feet to seventy-five feet. Reduce the rear yard setback from the required seventy-five feet to thirty-six feet and reduce the onsite parking by twenty-two percent of what is required by code. These modifications to a buyright density and form are being requested in order to build a one hundred and nineteen unit multifamily building. Planning Commission and City Council held a joint public hearing on this request at their May tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. As the proposed development is within the city's entrance corridor, the Planning Commission also deliberated on the request as the Entrance Corridor Review Board. Some of the following issues were discussed: parking and amending the code for permanent parking, site distance for cars turning onto JPA from Washington and Observatory, trash storage and removal, massing scale of the building and the impact it could have to the surrounding neighborhood, the streets of work guidelines and how it relates to the three-foot wide planting strip along JPA. Planning Commission and City Council had a long conversation related to the project. They recognized the need for more dwelling units in the city, particularly in the university area, but expressed concerns with the massing and scale of the building and how this project would relate to the existing homes in the neighborhood. It was determined that most of the massing and scale issues could be addressed and mitigated when the project comes back to ERB for design review and a certificate of appropriateness. The inclusion of affordable housing units on-site was also a major point for discussion. Pursuant to Code section thirty-four twelve, the applicant must either provide affordable housing units on or off-site or pay into the city's Affordable Housing Fund. City Council indicated they would prefer affordable housing units over cash and move payments or larger payment to better reflect the true cost of building affordable units. The overall takeaway from the Planning Commission or from the public hearing for both the City Council and Planning Commission was that a buyright development on the subject property would not meet the city's needs, but the SUP request should be adjusted to create a better development. The ERB, which again is the Planning Commission, voted seven to nothing to find the impact of increased height and related massing and scale will be an adversely impact to the Fontaine Avenue-Jefferson Park Avenue entrance corridor. However, however, these impacts can be mitigated during the required design review process. The public hearing on May tenth was a hybrid meeting allowing the public to participate online and in person. During the public hearing, fourteen members of the public participated and they voiced some of the following concerns: parking, trash, shadow impact of the building on the, as a massing scale, pedestrians crossing JPA from the subject property regardless of whether crosswalks are located there, removal of large existing trees, the proposed development could alter the charm and characteristic of the neighborhood. The proposed development was too large and does not match the scale of the neighborhood. Fire and rescue will have problems getting down Observatory Avenue. The develop, the development will create much needed student housing close to the university. The proposed development needs more affordable housing units, but would help address some of of the city's housing needs. The Planning Commission voted four-three to recommend approval of the special use application with conditions to City Council. Proposed conditions can be found within the draft resolution for the project in your packet. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions along with staff from other departments. The applicant's team is also in attendance tonight and has prepared a presentation for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do I, I understand from your last comment that the applicant would like to make a presentation to us at this point?
Yes, you can either...
I see Ms. Hannigan showing up on screen, so I assume that's a yes.
Yeah, I'll give counsel opportunity if they have any clarifying questions prior to the applicant giving you a presentation, but that could also be done at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation.
Okay. Ms. Hannigan, uh, be aware that we are all pretty familiar with the project, and I hope you don't feel the need to start from scratch.
Understood. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Erin Hannigan. I'm a principal at Mitchell Matthews Architects and Planners. I'm joined tonight by Kevin Riddle and John Matthews, as well as representatives from our client, Aspen Heights Partners, and Timmins Group, our civil engineer. Thank you for the opportunity to present quickly tonight. I do not intend to re-present the same information that you received at the Planning Commission hearing in May. I do wanna emphasize that our team recognizes the current transitional moment we find ourselves in, where the existing zoning, uh, still applies, but as a community, we are converging on an updated zoning ordinance to align with the new comprehensive plan. Uh, this is the existing zoning and the new comprehensive plan. Again, it complies with both. Um, I do wanna briefly mention that based on direction from the city, we have not altered our project's design since you saw it last at Planning Commission. Um, again, this is the same site plan, and while we did, uh, agreed to change the site plan to, uh, have a three-foot buffer along Jefferson Park Avenue followed by a seven-foot sidewalk, those updates are not reflected in the site plan that you're looking at. Um, here is a rendering of the building. Again, it's the same as you've seen previously, and a view along Jefferson Park Avenue.
All we are seeing is a blank page, just a, a title page. Are we supposed to be seeing things changing?
Oh, my, yes. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing and try again, just to...
Okay.
Bring it back up.
There we go.
So, again, this is the site plan that has not changed. The rendering has not changed, and the streetscape along Jefferson Park Avenue. I'm not gonna go back and show you the zoning maps. Um, so at that meeting at Planning Commission, we heard two main concerns by planning commissioners and counselors. They were the affordable housing component of the project, and the architecture, specifically the refinement of the massing and the scale of the project. Over the course of the summer, and thank you for your patience with our team, our client has offered an additional donation to the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund to reflect the difference between our current affordable housing policy based on an eighty percent AMI and the anticipated future policy at sixty percent AMI. This brings the total contribution to over one million. As stated in that donation letter, Aspen Heights Partners is committed to becoming a reliable partner within the Charlottesville community. On the second concern, uh, we've assembled some strategies and examples that demonstrate what we have available to us to refine the architecture and modify the massing and scale. As previously discussed, we plan to work with the Entrance Corridor Review Board to refine the architecture and address these concerns. If you have the time and interest now, Kevin Riddle, my colleague, uh, can quickly go into more depth on these strategies. This is a list in front of you at the moment. Um, if you'd like to hear those, we can show you examples of each of these, or we can, um, again, review this with Entrance Corridor Review Board.
Let me just speak for myself. Uh, one of the fundamental concerns that I've got about the process in which we are engaged is that what we're effectively being asked to do is to approve, is to approve an SUP, which is supposed to include a site plan contingent upon submission of a site plan. And that's, that's something that I find distressing, uh, and if there are ways that you can relieve that distress by some of your explanations here, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So, the drawing that we graphically showed earlier, as architects, we refer to a site plan, but a site plan has very specific, uh, requirements in the ordinance that, uh, involves a lot of engineering. And it's that engineering document that will be created by Timmins Group, our civil engineer, that goes, uh, through city staff and gets commented on and is the official site plan process.
I understand this is not an official site plan process at this point. My, my point was simply to say that the way the, our current statute, our current ordinance is written, it contemplates the submission of a true site plan. I understand why you don't wanna go through all the engineering difficulties and expenses before you even know whether you're in the right ballpark, and that's why we find ourselves in this position, and that's frankly why we've been trying to get the zoning ordinance rewritten for the last five years to deal with this problem. My only point is, if you've got things that, I, as I said at the meeting a couple months ago, my big concern is that I, I think the, the massing is a real problem, and if you can show some ways that you're gonna be able to reduce the massing, I invite you to, to try to placate me a little bit.
Sure. I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin to go through these with you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kevin Riddle. I work at Mitchell Matthews with Erin, um, and I'm gonna go quickly through these slides. Um, it, we're, our understanding is that, uh, we want you to feel assured that we will take the process of going through the, um, deliberations, um, and strategies with the ERB. That's a, you know, that's a pretty serious process, and it's a, a process we've encountered before. We, we've been through a lot of Board of Architectural Review meetings as well, and we are familiar with a project starting, having a, a certain shape and form, a certain massing, a certain scale, and then it going through revisions and actually being helped along the way, um, by the, the judgments of experienced people we have either on the BAR or the ERB. And so, in the slides to follow, what you're going to see, um, are basically examples of buildings, uh, where we see that certain strategies have been employed, and those strategies basically are taken right from the entrance review guidelines that are published by the city. So, if we go on to the next slide, um, here's an example of, of one priority, which is to create a landscape and a streetscape that's inviting and engaging, and this is where we feel like people have the most contact with a building typically anyway. Um, it's not from some remove, but, you know, along the street, the first several levels. And I think you can see in the, the streetscape perspective that we have for, um, the, the building at JPA, that we're, we're trying to, you know, create a thoughtful and engaging streetscape. Um, and, and you see here some examples that are local and that should be familiar to you. Um, the, the apartments at Tenth and Dairy that have rather nice porches, um, there are trees planted there, those are going to get bigger, um, as, as the landscape matures, um, it's gonna benefit everything. A good example of that would be the images to the left of seventeen oh seven JPA. Um, that's an apartment building. I'm sure some of you remember, um, it going up. It was only about fifteen years ago. And actually, if you look on the city's GIS, um, map today, and you call out this property, you'll see a little snapshot taken of the project shortly after it was built, and that's still published online. And you'll see the landscape around this building at the time was, was a little on the stark side. The building had recently been constructed, and now you can see just, just how nice those sycamore trees that have come up, what a difference they've made. And, and, and we think if this is a case where the building, um, it, it benefits from it, and so, of course, does the pedestrians experience along the street. And, and we're optimistic that the things we're proposing along both JPA and Observatory Avenue can have the same benefit. If we go to the next slide, so here's, on the left is, is one of the pages from the guidelines, and then on the right, you see examples of buildings that we think have addressed in a variety of ways, uh, the priorities laid out here. And actually, if, we think if you look at the elevations and perspectives of our project, you see us already gesturing toward a lot of these things, and, and they can be handled in, in a variety of ways. We, we think that's important to note, to, to have a lot of options available. You know, I'm sure as you look at the projects to fa, that you see in already and to follow, not all of you are gonna love every project, um, but there should be enough in there that you can see, you know, ways forward, um, it, to get to something that, that could be, you know, interesting involving, um, and, and, and the, the building that we've proposed so far could adopt certain revisions, um, that, that would bring the massing and scale, um, to something that, um, you know, the ERB would agree is, is, um, something appropriate for the neighborhood. If we go to the next slide, uh, here is, is the idea of, of varying the palette, um, so, you know, different materials can create, um, richer facades, um, more interesting buildings. Uh, this is something that we've already employed to some extent, and, uh, that we can test even further. And the next slide, the color palette. Um, this is a fairly simple one, but can also be quite an effective one. Um, I, I think everyone's familiar with the kind of transformation that happened at the, at the CMU buildings that are over there near Circa and Seville Coffee. Um, just, just changing the, the color scheme on a group of buildings, um, can, can be significant. Um, again, I'm sure that's not a change that, like, everybody in the city loves, but I, I think it's somewhat interesting that it's worked out, and we're optimistic that, that we can find ways, using color, using materials, um, to improve our proposal. Uh, the next slide, additional architectural detailing. Uh, you see, again, on, on the right, what you see are, are real, I think, a variety of examples. I mean, these are very different buildings, uh, but I think they're all doing certain kind of worthwhile things, uh, to create facades, or, or to create buildings that even though they are somewhat tall, um, are not overpowering. And the next slide, modifying the roof form. Um, you know, this, this slide, I think, kinda speaks for itself. Uh, there's a lot of ways that can be accomplished with smaller sort of dormer, gable roofs. Um, the next slide. And then articulating the building envelope. Um, this is something, again, that we, you see underway. Um, there's, there's a lot of relief in the, 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 the massing of the, the building that we're presenting now, but I think we can take this potentially a little bit farther. And, and these are examples of buildings, uh, that we think have, have rather successfully handled that. And I believe that, that concludes those slides. I'll, I'll turn it back over to Erin.
Okay. The little beeper just told us that you've been, uh, talking for about ten minutes. However, since some of that's specifically in response to my questions, I'm not gonna, you know, hit you with the gong right now, but encourage you to wrap it up.
We're actually finished with the slides, so...
Okay.
And happy to answer any further questions you have about the project, and thank you for your time.
Counselors, questions?
No, I think this is a good project, and I'm gonna vote for it. And I'll say, too, that the, that the, um, slides they just took us through, um, I think are indicative of thoughtful ways that professionals would, would work to take a building this size and actually harmonize it better with the neighborhood. Obviously, this is gonna be a big building, but the, the techniques and the strategies that they laid out are, um, the typical standard sorts of ones that architects would use to make a building, uh, look where it fit better within an existing, uh, area. The other thing I'll say is that I feel like the architect, the developer has worked with us in good faith to, uh, come up with, um, a much more reasonable, um, allocation of funds to the Affordable Housing Fund.
Uh, yeah, so, my comments on this, I'm, I'm supportive of this well, as well, but I have some, some concerns about it, um, and that is, um, when Brian and I, when we met with the residents out there, I think at this point several months ago, I, I pulled out my notes from it, and their concerns were, um, the scale, um, the shade, they were really concerned about the, the shade of the, of the building overshadowing, um, the residents, the existing, um, and trash disposal. I think that, I think that, and I understand that if you look at some of the apartments and residents along JPJ, where you just see the trash cans and things out for many days afterwards, and I, and, and I know that talking to the developer, they're gonna handle all of that internally. And there's also concerns, and thi, this is not all, but, um, the letters and information we receive addressed a lot of, um, also addressed this, but, um, they were concerned about the vibrations, and I think that was particularly during the, the, um, construction, and, and, and I think that, um, that is something that, that I hope can be minimized, uh, you know, with the, you know, if this project moves forward, um, that the residents, that there, there are several, even though this neighborhood has changed, and I think that I read some statistics somewhere, that ninety-three or ninety-four percent of this neighborhood is, um, with this block is, is rental. Um, I, I, I don't want to, I hate to quote because I, I can't verify that, but I know there's a high proportion of this area is, is rental. Um, but there are several, um, longstanding residents of that, and, and I think that, that we want the development to be as respectful to, you know, all residents as, as possible, and to take in their concerns as we can. Um, I thought that the, the presentation and information about how they're gonna address the scaling, um, was very helpful, um, for me. What wasn't, um, is the affordability of it, how we're going to address the affordability of it. Um, I recall from previous presentation that it's, they would take, um, our nonprofits, um, about two hundred thousand dollars to build a, a, an affordable unit, and if we're looking at nine, eight or nine, eight to ten units, um, that's, you know, a, a million dollars doesn't quite, um, get there. So, I, I just, you know, um, but, um, I'm so happy with the increase, but I'm not sure that would get us nine units. So, that's, um, where I am, or, and, and, you know, kind of some of the pluses that I, this will just, overall, just increase the supply of, of housing, because if we don't build it here, um, the, there's gonna be pressure on other neighborhoods in, in the city. And, um, and so, um, I know the comp plan calls for, you know, more indent, more dense housing along this, this corridor, so, um, the information and emails, both for this and against this project, has been very helpful for me, and, and I, I read them all. I can't say that I read them all word for word, but I, I, I got the gist of all of the emails that, that, and, well, that we received, and I really, you know, I'm appreciative about them. So, that's where I am now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Payne?
Yeah, I guess a few questions is, if, if you're able to share, I mean, what are, just even ballpark, what is like the cost per unit you're sort of looking at right now in terms of construction?
I'm gonna ask Aspen Heights to, our client, to respond to that.
I'm sorry, and yes, this is Dan Cable with Aspen Heights. Um, I think, I'm, I'm pulling it up now, and I believe its cost of construction is roughly three hundred thousand dollars a unit, is what we're projecting.
I didn't hear that. About what?
Three hundred thousand dollars a unit.
Okay.
And these are relatively large units by comparison to what it's, since they're, since the target consumer is, is students, um, we have a larger mix of veterans per unit than what you would typically see in conventional multifamily.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And...
Okay. And connected to that, just out of curiosity, some questions about the proffers. Because this gets at the core, the number one issue I had with it is that we were basing in approval based on our future land use map and future zoning changes, which we haven't yet done, but which would include inclusionary zoning. So we were approving a project based on that criteria, but without the inclusionary zoning piece that will be a part of it, and that that would mean we're not following the process we're actually set out to do. And you did make a contribution, tried to get closer to that. And in your narrative about the amount you are choosing to donate to the Affordable Housing Fund, you noted, you noted that you're using an estimate from the Urban Institute. I looked at that, and there's no specific numbers, but it says rely on local data. I don't have access to that data. What number per unit were you using to calculate your contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund? And where did, what did you base that number in?
So, if I may answer, we, we look at it as the affordable gap, which is essentially the capitalized difference between what would otherwise be market rent and the target affordable rent. So looking at it as just cost to produce sometimes ignores that even an affordable unit, there's still revenue collected on an affordable unit. So it's not the pure cost to produce is what creates the gap in affordability.
Can I interrupt you just a second?
Sure.
When you figure out how you capitalize that, what, what interest rate do you use? Discount rate or internal rate of return?
We used a 6% cap rate.
Six, okay. Thank you. I've often wondered what that was going to turn out to be.
And likewise, the proposal is 119 units, correct? And 10% of that would be 11.9, and you used nine units. I'm just curious, what was the justification for basing it, an estimate based on nine units?
The nine units came from the Affordable Dwelling Unit Ordinance worksheet that the city provided to us, that is part of the current ordinance calculation.
Okay. No, it's, it's all helpful. I mean, it's difficult for everyone because we haven't finished our inclusionary zoning program, so it's not fully fleshed out. I think there's, one, if this was our inclusionary zoning program, it would be 12 units, 10% of the units would be 12, not nine, but I understand that is not formally in place. I guess another question for staff, a few questions, is, so in our agenda item tonight, the Entrance Corridor Review Board voted seven to zero that there would be adverse impacts because of the massing and scale, but they believe that in the design review process, that those could be addressed. To be quite honest, I don't know much of anything about our entrance review board, entrance corridor review board process and what that entails. Could anyone on staff just help clarify, like, what that would entail, what is enforceable within that process, what is required and what's not?
I don't have, our preservation planner is not with us tonight. Jeff would be the one shepherding it through there, so I don't really have information other than it will go back to Planning Commission to get a COA. There are, you know, the guidelines that the applicant talked about in their presentation. So typically, they're working a bit on the final site plan and their entrance corridor stuff kind of at the same time, but they don't want to get one too far ahead of the other, because if there's a major change to one, it will impact the other. But once they get their COA from Entrance Corridor Review, that opens up the site plan process to be more on solid footing.
And so if it goes back to the Planning Commission, is that just a decision that Planning Commission makes and it doesn't go back to City Council at any point?
I believe, I believe it is just ERB that issues a COA for Entrance Corridor, it's not like the BAR.
Okay. And I think my final question is, the biggest nitpicky thing is, I think it's important, whatever we do, we recognize no matter what's going to happen here, there's going to be greater density. And I think that is inevitable and can be a positive thing. But the concern I have with the projects is just the gray area where we haven't yet finished our future land use map or the inclusionary zoning program. And if we're approving it based on these future criteria, we need to include that as well. So that inclusionary zoning piece, I think, is closer. I understand there's a lot of undefined things. I would think this is less than what our inclusionary zoning is, certainly not by nearly as dramatic an amount as before, before the additional proffer. And the other thing is, under our future land use map, this would be mixed, mixed-use urban corridor, which is up to five stories of height, except for key intersections, which would be up to eight. And staff determined that this would not be a key intersection, so it would be five stories rather than eight. So even if we're following our future land use map, it wouldn't get up to, well, 7.7 and 1/2 stories as this one is. I guess I'm curious from staff, what is, what is that determination of a key intersection? And why did you determine that this did not meet that criteria? And are there other areas, like along JPA, that would?
Oh, yes, the JPA, Fontaine intersection is a key intersection. What that comes from the comp plan is it talks about streets that were, it references the Streets of Work document for key intersections. But the Streets of Work document doesn't give any guidance for key intersections. I believe I can find the page from the report, the staff report from this went to Planning Commission. The, yes, as, the applicant has proposed would have seven stories at JPA, Washington Observatory Avenue intersections. It stated that buildings, that buildings up to eight stories are appropriate at key intersections in this district. Key intersections are not called out in any city planning document, but as staff's professional opinion, that Washington Avenue, Observatory Avenue would not be categorized as key intersections due to the existing conditions and level of key intersections. This area would most likely be JPA at Maury Avenue and JPA at Shamrock Road.
And I guess a question for the developer is, you talked about this a little bit in the presentation, and you talked about the Planning Commission as well. I mean, what is your justification for, even within our future land use map, this would be five stories rather than up to eight? Why you think in terms of what you're planning to do in terms of mitigating the massing and scale in the visual impact, why you think, you think it fits still within this intersection?
Yes, I'll take that. If I can share my screen again quickly. So this was a image that we created for our Planning Commission presentation. And again, we read the comprehensive plan, that it's five stories up to eight at key intersections, but it's not five stories except at key intersections. And that's how it was worded in the documents that we've reviewed. And what we feel is that that means that there will be eight stories around all key intersections. And again, the key intersections of being identified as Maury and Fontaine and Shamrock, and, or sorry, Maury and JPA, also Fontaine, and Shamrock and JPA. And so with eight stories surrounding those key intersections, that you would want a transect to occur, which is a term that has been discussed for quite some time in the city, where there's a transition between heights of different buildings and between different zoning designations, and that height is one way to help transition that across a transect, and that the transect would occur in both directions, both along the street, from one key intersection to the next key intersection, as well as across perpendicular to the street, and transition then to the adjacent zoning designation. So the diagram we're showing here suggests that for one block away from a key intersection, we would be permitted to have seven stories. And again, it's only seven stories at the very front, and it very quickly recedes into the hillside and becomes five stories for the majority of that block. And the five stories, again, matches the five stories that is zoned behind it in the higher intensity residential district in the comp plan. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes. That's all I have for questions. I guess overall thoughts is, you know, I'm torn, because I think, I think if we're looking at what our future inclusionary zoning ordinance will be, I think this short shrifts what that would eventually be. But I also recognize that that is not adopted and in place, and this is much closer than it would have been, even though I don't think it, no, even just in terms of 10% of units, it doesn't fully match what that will be in the future. And I understand your justification for, in terms of, you know, the critical key intersections and why this could fit. And I think if I had assurances that the design review process would mitigate it, I would be a lot more comfortable. But I just, one way or the other, I don't have much knowledge or confidence in what is enforceable as part of that process. All that said, you know, I also don't want to kill the project, because I think density is inevitable in this corridor. There is still a benefit to affordable housing in, I just, but at the same time, I don't think this is as ideal as we would want, when, if we're thinking about the goals of our, how we're going to implement and evaluate projects as part of our future rezoning and comprehensive plan update, which is not very helpful one way or the other, but that's sort of how I'm thinking about it.
One question that I've got, and I will tell you that my overall approach, I've said this a number of times, talking about infill development, is that every infill development project has problems. Every infill development project is going to have some, frankly, negative impact on some neighbors someplace. And the question is, can we hold those negative impacts down to a reasonable level? Can we mitigate the impacts that are going to come? The one that I find, I wonder whether it is possible to do something about, is whether there is some way to do something to widen the roads on either side, to, if it means skinnying up the building a little bit. Because that's, that's a significant problem that is going to be unique to that street or those streets. Problems of density, problems of traffic, problems of parking, I think are going to be problems regardless of where this project would be located or regardless, I mean, you're going to have a project with problems at 80 units, much less 119 units. But the question, I guess, that I wonder is, is there any way to widen, you know, to dedicate more of this parcel to widening those two streets to, at the very least, deal with that particular issue?
Timmons might want to augment my response, but the city streets are city property, whereas obviously there's a limit to the parcel that is the client's.
Well, of course, one, one condition could be that you, that we say, give us three feet of your, of your property, and let's add it to the street.
So that changes the setback, which is, changes the entire project as well, because the setback is controlled by the property line. And then the next question I would say is, are you going to ask all the other properties on the street for the same distance so that it's equivalent?
Nobody else is asking for a special use permit. Supposing we say, we'll ask everybody who's asking for a special use permit on the street, thereby you're, you're being treated equally.
I think what she's saying is that the other properties on the road further down, would they have to, if you want to widen the road, how are you going to deal with the other properties?
Well, I, you know, it may be more of an issue for Washington. It's not, I doubt it's much of an issue for Observatory, which is dead end. But again, I'm looking, as I said, I'm looking for ways to mitigate the deleterious effects of what you're looking to do. And that's one that comes to mind. A second that comes to mind, as I said early on, was trying to figure out some way to ameliorate the massing. Now, I'll say this, when I went out to the site another time, I did something I had not done before, which is to approach it, and looking up as I, as I approached, going south on JPA and passing 707, 1707, passing 1725. 1725 is basically six stories, as I recall. There's much more of a sense as you pass those rather large buildings, rather tall buildings, much less of a sense to me that the building that is being proposed on this site is ridiculously large, is ridiculously high. There is a greater sense of that if you are coming north on JPA, because of course the buildings that are just south of this site are lower. But, so one of the points I was trying to make earlier in some other meetings, talk about being harmonious with the neighborhood. If you're talking about being harmonious with what you see just north of the site, it's much more nearly harmonious than with what is just south of the site. As I say, I'm, I'm always looking for ways to make sure that we can ameliorate the effects of, of the problems that infill construction is going to cause. And one of the things that is most pronounced, it seems to me, is this, is this question of the width of, of the side streets, which is why I asked the question I asked. I mean, I'll say that as a general proposition, I firmly believe that the more units we build at whatever, almost whatever price point, will help the situation of affordable housing in Charlottesville, and will help the problem of affordable housing in university-adjacent neighborhoods. I will also say that an earlier public comment was made that the city of Charlottesville has only grown by 5% over the last decade. That's not true at all. It's more like 18% when you take a realistic figure for the census. And so we do need a lot more units. And 119 units is a lot more units. Again, the question is, how many of those do we need to put on this particular site? So I'm, where I'm kind of grappling with this is, I'm generally in favor of it. I'm generally in favor of the idea of, you know, the significantly larger payment for affordable housing. And I would add that although a new housing, a new affordable housing unit typically costs us in the neighborhood of $200,000, if what we're trying to do is to facilitate the effort of a private party to buy and fix, or fix up, or somehow get a, an affordable unit, it tends to cost the city about $30,000. So if we're looking at that figure instead of $200,000, then a $1 million contribution would be basically a 30, it'd be about, about 35 additional units that it would facilitate us being able to bring online. So those are my overall thoughts. I am, I continue to be concerned with the notion that we're going to defer all of the design considerations to a point where it would not come back to council. Not that I want to substitute my judgment on a design matter for anybody else's, but I hate losing any control over the process whatsoever. And what we're effectively being asked to do, it seems to me, is to say that we're going to leave, leave it to the Planning Commission, either through the site plan process or through the entrance corridor process. We're going to leave it to them to solve all the problems that I wish we had a way to try to solve right now.
Well, is there a way to, maybe this is a question for Ms. Robertson, well, it is a question for Ms. Rob, is there a way to ask it to come back to us for design, final design say-so, or not? Because it's not part of the BAR.
I think we'd have to change the ordinance to do that, if I recall.
Yeah, City Council, unless you include provisions within the special use permit, within the special use permit that relate to appearance or how something will relate to surrounding properties or the neighborhood, but should build those conditions into a special use permit. The Entrance Corridor Review Board and the BAR are the only design review entities. And even they are supposed to simply review something presented to them and determine whether it's compliant with the applicable guidelines.
Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm not sure I have the votes, but I'll make it. I move the resolution granting a special use permit for property located at 2005 to 2007 Jefferson Park Avenue, 104 Observatory Avenue, City Tax Map 17 parcels 103, 103.1, and 104.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, Council?
Yeah, I think everything that's been said, I respect and appreciate. I guess, I won't use the enemy of, what was it? Let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good enough because you pointed out the other night that that could be very simplistic, Councilor Pings, but I appreciate that. But I think we're at least a year away to having this zoning rewrite done with the inclusion, the IZ and all of that sort of wrapped up with the, with the zoning. The, the law that has to go behind all that is, my guess, a year, maybe 18 months. And we have a real need for housing now, like everyone acknowledges. I guess that's my first point. My second point is, you know, I do think that the map that Ms. Hanigan showed earlier in terms of how they have laid out the heights of units, sort of looking forward to the new comp plan and trying to be creative in terms of how this proposal might fit into those future heights. I, I think that displays a certain level of thoughtfulness and thinking about the future. I have confidence, maybe this is, you know, unwarranted, but I have confidence that the professionals involved, as well as the professionals that we've put on the planning commission, will be thoughtful in the sort of final design that's put forward for this project. Then I guess the last thing is with respect to the inclusionary zoning piece and the, and the housing component, the affordable housing component. You know, $1 million, I feel like is, is a pretty substantial sum. We're still working out exactly how that might be cashed out literally in our, in our future law. But Mr. Freeze presented to the developer some options about how to think about this extra, what they call a donation, but basically this extra amount. And it was a, it was a very sort of liberal number in terms of the dollar figure that will result from that. And I feel like they saw that, they were willing to go there, as it were, and that this, this is a credible response that they've given us.
Just to tag on some of the things that Brian said, I, I do have confidence that the ERB will be able to address the, the mass and the scale and, and they, the landscape architect that they have on this project will help facilitate that as well. And, you know, I was looking at it differently as far as the impact on affordable housing, that we could parlay that to build 30 to 35 units if we work with our community partners. And I think that when you do something like this, the first building is always going to be the, the most difficult. But I, I have confidence that this will be a project, you know, not now that maybe the residents will support or accept, but I think hopefully in the long run, they will.
Yeah, you know, I'd already discussed most of it. But again, it will satisfy no one. But I think as we're moving to the reality of increasing density, which is necessary and positive, I think, I think the perspective to have for it is how do we get to yes, but try to use the leverage and power we have as much as possible to ensure that we have decent projects in getting to yes and not just immediately approving projects. As I discussed, I think there's a lot of limitations that still need to be worked out in our rezoning process as well as the inclusionary zoning process in terms of defining what's required in terms of affordability, particularly when it comes to some gray areas, like what is a key intersection and, you know, what do we do there? I do think, once we flesh out our IZ inclusionary zoning program, it would be more contribution than this. I believe that the ERB could mitigate some of these things, but I couldn't tell someone I can guarantee you it will. All that said, it will satisfy nobody. But if I look at the, the pros and cons and the dissatisfactions I have with it, if I lay out the pros and cons, I couldn't justify killing the project at this point because of those concerns, even though I think they're things that we absolutely need to address going forward in our rezoning and, and inclusionary zoning program. So I am, I have a lot of dissatisfactions, but I can't justify killing the project.
I'll just say, to add, as I've sort of further molded things over, I'm not, I'm really not trying to be the engineer in the project. I'm really not trying to be the architect in the project. And I'm really not trying to say, gee, I've got an idea as how you can redevelop, or, you know, redo your entire plan. It's not a good role for me and I'm not going to try to go there. On balance, $1 million, I wish, I, I hope that there will be some ways that the, the massing issues can be resolved. I hope there's going to turn out to be enough flexibility in the way that the project gets put together to be able to, you know, find a foot here, a foot there, to, to some. I really think that the, the street width is the, is the issue that is unique to this site, that needs to be addressed. And I hope there will be a way to address it. I guess I'm just going to have to have faith. Ms. Thomas?
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snutt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay. Passes four to nothing. Do we want to take a break for a moment or keep going?
I'm fine anyway.
Yeah.
Next item up, Harmony Ridge subdivision, street acceptance. Mr. Dawson to present, and you need to make a statement.
Yes, just as best practice and full transparency, I wanted to disclose that I had had an employment relationship with Habitat. I do not currently and have been advised it does not constitute a conflict of interest. And I am able to impartially discuss and vote on this agenda item tonight. But just in the interest of full transparency, I wanted to put that out there.
Okay, Mr. Dawson, fire away.
Yes, I'm here. Councilors, my presence, can you hear me?
Can you hear you now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You were frozen there.
Okay. I apologize, I've turned my video off, hopefully that, that helps. I am here presenting a street acceptance resolution for the Harmony Ridge subdivision. I'll just read the background for you, and then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Habitat for Humanity of Charlottesville submitted a major subdivision for Harmony Ridge located off the western side of Fifth Street. It's shown in the attached plaque, which is in your packet. Harmony Ridge plans were originally approved on June 10th, 2017. The final site as built plan was approved on April 13th, 2022. The proposed street infrastructure improvements have been completed and the developers requested those new portions of the street right of way. Refer to in the attached final plan sheet two through five and five, be accepted for inclusion in the city street system. This time, all work required to be completed for road acceptance is done. The satisfaction of all reviewing city departments. And so with that, there is a, there is a resolution attached as well.
Anybody have any questions?
I can answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dawson?
No.
I helped, you work for him, I helped with my church to help build him. Well, very little, they don't let me hammer too much, but they're nice homes.
It's so nice to, to go from something extremely complex to something that's relatively straightforward. We can all get behind this.
All right, is there a motion on the ordinance then?
Let me find it.
The resolution's on page 117.
I move the resolution accepting the improved sections of public street rights of way named Harmony Ridge Lane and Alto Place into the city's public street system for operation and maintenance.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Thomas, take a vote.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snutt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
It passes four, nothing. Appropriation, you want to take a break? Appropriation of $656,000 of CARES funding for CAT. Mr. Williams, are you with us? Says here Garland Williams will present. There you go. You're muted, however. Or at least you're not coming through orally. I can see you, but can't hear you. A little bit. Didn't hear that?
Is it getting better?
That's better.
Okay. So Mayor Snutt, members of council, what you have before you is a paper that speaks to the available balance of some CARES funds that was appropriated to CAT back in March of 2020. We have five planning projects that we would like to use a portion of that remaining funds. One of them is $300,000 for a required TSP, which is a transit study that, it used to be a TVP, but now it's a TSP, $26,000 to do tabletop security exercise. That we had, we are a small urban transit system. The U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Transit Security Administration, TSA came in and did an assessment of us and recommended that we do a tabletop exercise. So we are moving forward with that. $25,000 to hire Williams' modeling firm in conjunction with HR to do kind of a routine payroll audit, should be done every three to four years. Has it not been done? We do collect federal funding. $250,000 to hire AECom to help us with the number of amenities projects and NIPA that we are required to do before we do any capital projects because we are spending federal funding. $55,000 to hire Kimberly Horn and Associates to help us with some analysis. We're working on a project for Almar County to do large microtransit. They will help us assess what the availability of software is out there. We use it as, either we do it ourselves or use it as a connection to a public party.
Okay. Questions?
Just one, just out of curiosity, what is, what will the payroll audit specifically be doing and what is sort of the timeline hoped for, for it?
So we're working with HR. We had an inquiry about a couple of our employees to look at our payroll methods, to make sure we are accounting for our payroll processes correctly. So that has very little to do with what's being assessed, what the starting pay would be. And I know that was a question that came up earlier. But this is kind of a routine administrative component that you should do on a regular basis, to make sure we are dotting our Is and crossing all our Ts. The audit will start in earnest, I think Thursday. And I'm, I'm hoping that will probably be done in about 45 to 60 days.
Thank you. I have no other questions, and they seem straightforward and necessary to me in terms of these expenditures.
Yeah, how, how long did he said the study would take? Five or six days? I didn't, um.
Weeks, I think.
Weeks, okay.
Is that right?
Weeks.
That's correct, about 45 to 60 days.
Forty-five, okay.
Forty-five days to 60 days. Okay, so any other questions? Counselors, you want to, shall we agree to move this to the October 3rd meeting for a second reading on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Oh, you, your next one up is yours too. Appropriation from CAT to Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission.
So this one is in reference to the governance study that the Thomas Jefferson Planning Commission is undertaking for the region. Because CAT has some available local funding, which is the requirement for this match. We are able to use our appropriation that was passed by council to fund this activity so that we comply with federal requirements. So this is just administrative. We're using local, available local funding, which is a requirement for the study in, in paying, paying our port, paying the city's portion to TJPDC.
Okay. Questions?
Is this a one of two readings?
This is one of two readings, so we need to agree to move it to the October 3rd meeting for the second reading on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Everybody fine with that? Okay. All right, moving right along. Approval of the Fifth Amended Grant Agreement Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Housing Program. First reading carried over from September 6th. Alex Icafuna will present, Mr. Icafuna?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, public. There is a, the only presentation we have tonight. It's just to let the council know that the proposed changes that council requested at the last meeting, you know, have been made. And tonight will be the second reading. So staff is asking the City Council to approve the agreement with the proposed changes.
As I recall, we were basically in agreement with it last time, but were concerned that the resolution, as it was presented, still had some sort of undecided things and some things that had to get fixed. And we wanted to get them all fixed before we voted.
I think they've been fixed.
I think they've been fixed also.
I think we're down a counselor, though.
Well, so, well, I mean, I suspect it's going to be either 30 or 40, right?
Yeah.
I think it's been addressed pretty straightforward to me.
Note that Mr. Wade has stepped out for a second. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Sure. I move the resolution approving the Fifth Amended Grant Agreement for the Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snutt?
Yes.
Passes three, nothing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade will rejoin us shortly. And then the next item, thank you, Mr. Icafuna. I think you're done. Appropriating $675,000 in C-SRAP funding for use in acquiring property. Second reading, Mr. Sanders?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This item actually was also discussed by you briefly at the prior meeting. But because that item did not move forward, we did not want this item to go forward as a consent agenda item, but to make it an action item as well. Just to simply remind you that this is to use $675,000 of the accumulated C-SRAP funds to allow for the purchase of property by CRHA. in an effort to begin this realization of what we are referring to as a land bank. We still have to work out the terms of that. And then you have a second item in regards to another opportunity that has come up as well.
And this property in number 15 on the agenda is the Coleman Street property?
That is correct. This is four units at Coleman Street, 1016 and 1020 Coleman.
Is this page 160 of the packet, or have I gone too far?
It is, page 160.
This is Carlton, then? Okay, Coleman, yeah, sorry.
Right.
We talked about it last time.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions, or are we ready to have a motion?
I move the resolution appropriating $675,000 of the FY 2023 CSTRAP budget allocation to be used by CRHA for acquisition of 1016 and 1020 Coleman Street as permanent units of affordable housing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, it passes four to nothing. Resolution appropriating CSTRAP funding for the acquisition of 818 Montrose Avenue. First of two readings. Mr. Sanders?
So this is using $355,000 of that same pot that has been accumulated within the CSTRAP program to provide for the acquisition of these units. CRHA would move forward to purchase them in agreement with the city. And we will be working that out with the city attorney's office on behalf of the city.
And this is just a one of two readings, so we're just looking to pass it on to the next, to the next agenda. Anybody have any questions about it?
No.
Okay, so shall we agree to move it to the October 3rd meeting for a second reading on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that concludes our allotted agenda. Are there any other business items for consideration? Counselors, any questions for city management to be following up on? And I'll just say that I know we've talked a lot over the last month and even the last week about the issues around school buses and school safety and school transportation and so on. And we will be looking forward with breathless anticipation to your report, Mr. Rogers. So we're now at the final speaking opportunity for members of the public. Speakers will be given up three minutes. You may join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar, by pressing star nine if you have joined by phone. There is nobody else in council chambers, so we don't have to worry about the in-person option. Do we have anybody online who would like to be speaking to us?
Tanisha Hudson?
I'm sorry, Tanisha Hudson. Ms. Hudson, you have three minutes.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, Tanisha Hudson, first and foremost, that vote on that development that you all were discussing, that was really weird to me. But I'll send an email about that. Second off, Lloyd, you gave a shout out for the Pride Fest that went down, but I didn't hear anybody from council at all, not the city manager, not council, say anything about Chief Hazeney Smith hiring the first black battalion chief in 166 years. That was history. You all should have definitely acknowledged that, said something about it. I don't even think you even posted on Facebook about it. That is a historical mark in this city. We've never had one ever. Second, I'm getting a lot of requests from parents about the school bus issue. When do you all plan on? I know you keep pushing off the talk about the transportation raises, but like the gentleman said earlier, I wasn't able to speak earlier, they're working 60 hours. Your city school buses don't have, they're not picking up a lot of kids. There's a lot of kids literally walking to school, and there's some kids that's not even going to school. Parents aren't able to take their kids to school. I had to call the superintendent about a student that hasn't even been to school since the beginning of school. So there's many issues happening that I don't think you all are thinking about the domino effect of it all. But like, certain ethical groups aren't in last place, you know, by choice. There's a lot of moving factors there, you know, the pandemic set kids behind. The school bus issue is setting kids behind. Kids are being late to school. Some, like I said, some are not going. So you all need to kind of put some pep in your step with getting them some extra pay and getting them the things that they need so that you can hire people and compete with the other transportation jobs in the area. Last but not least, I went to a meeting in Richmond, and they were talking about the solar program. And I know Michael Payne is really big on the sustainability and the going green in the city. And Richmond launched solar training for their facilities and maintenance staff. I think that's something that you all need to do as well here in the city of Charlottesville. I sent an email down to the city manager to talk about it. I just think it would be dope to have someone come in and train your facility and maintenance staff so you all can prepare to go solar, so that they know how to install solar and hopefully do the work so that that building could cut its energy costs. And you can do what you need to do so that we can, you know, fight climate change and everything, and global warming and all that good stuff, and go green and save the world and the earth and everything. Another thing, I don't really support this JPA project. It's funny to me how you all accept housing for students at seven stories, but you won't build affordable housing for working citizens in the city at seven stories. You could have went up on Park Street at the MACA project site. You could have went up just as high, and you didn't do that. You're not making PHA do that. To me, it's the backwards decisions. And I just, I like to know y'all logic and thinking sometimes when y'all make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Anybody else?
Greg Weaver has his hand raised.
Mr. Weaver?
Hey, I'll be quick. Councilor Pinkston asked the question of how can we make cars slow down? And the, my answer to that would be to, it's infrastructure transformation around walking, biking, and bus, and what that entails is, like, I don't know. You know, cherry between Ridge and Roosevelt Brown is a very, would be very difficult to do this. But, you know, bus lanes only, compacting streets so that there are smaller car lanes and there's room for bike lanes. That kind of stuff does slow traffic. And if you can squeeze cars to where they're necessary and you make it accessible for people to walk, bike, and take the bus, you'll slow things down a bit. So just consider that and have a good night. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. All right, so that's the end of our community matters session, and we have nothing else on the agenda, so we're adjourned. Thank you all.